Good evening and welcome to the September ninth, two thousand and twenty five Johnson City Regional Planning Commission Meeting. If you are here to speak during the public hearing portion of the agenda, please wait until the chairman has opened the public hearing. Once opened, one person at a time may come to the podium to be recognized. Please speak clearly into the microphone and begin by giving your name and address. Then each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. We ask you to address the commission only, and the public hearing is only for items that are on the agenda before us this evening. We now call the meeting to order, and the time is six P M. So first item of business, Mr. Commissioner Williams, would you lead us in invocation and pledge a plea?
Please pray with me. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for your love and your undeserving grace. We thank you for the opportunity to serve, and we ask for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions for our city and our region. We ask that you continue to pour your blessings down upon this city, and we ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Williams. Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the agenda? Are there any changes?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any changes to those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I've had the opportunity to review the minutes. I see no changes that need to be made, so I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Would anyone like a second? Second, thank you, Commissioner Aldridge. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. The minutes are approved. Okay, we now, this is now the public comment portion of the, of the meeting. Do we have anyone registered for public comment this evening? I neglected to ask that of you first. Thank you, Heather. No one here to speak to anything on the agenda. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Has everyone had a shot? The opportunity was one item on the consent agenda tonight, which is the Clinchfield Street dedication and bond release. Does, do we need to pull that? Is there any discussion on that? Not as a remotion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to new business. The first item for, for discussion this evening is a proposed text amendment to the Washington County zoning resolution regarding electronic message boards. And Mr. McNamara is already up at the podium.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Bryce McNamara, Planner One with the Planning Division. This item for your consideration this evening is a text amendment to the Washington County zoning resolution. This is concerning the sign regulations. The process for Washington County text amendments requires a recommendation from all three planning commissions, as well as this planning commission, to forward a recommendation to the Washington County Commission on the item. Jonesboro and Washington County Planning Commissions have previously reviewed this and have unanimously recommended approval. The final action will be done at the Washington County Commission meeting on September twenty second. This proposal is staff-initiated by the Washington County staff and is changes to section five, ten dot eleven to allow electronic message board signage for all government buildings, schools, and churches. The full text is included in the packet this evening. However, all of the proposed changes are on this slide here, shown in the red and green colors. The Washington County Planning Director, Angie Charles, is here for any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Does anyone have any questions of staff?
No, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the text amendment to the Washington County zoning resolution.
One second. I believe this is a public hearing.
There's a public hearing on this.
At this point, if there are no questions, if there are no questions of staff, then we can close that portion and open the, open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this matter on the agenda this evening? Angie, would you like to? No? Okay, seeing no, no speakers this evening, we will close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Any questions of staff or discussion among ourselves?
This seems like a pretty straightforward request that would aid in the goals of Washington County's, you know, advertising within, within the county parameters. So I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the text amendment to the Washington County zoning as proposed.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aldridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson.
Yes.
Mayor Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton.
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNamara. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is the abandonment of public right-of-way at the intersection of South Roan Street and East Highland. Ms. Putney?
Good evening, Commission. This is a request for a right-of-way abandonment at the intersection of South Roan Street and East Highland Avenue. As depicted in the red area on the map, it is due to the realignment of East Highland that was conducted and concluded in two thousand and twenty-three. So now the portion of the right-of-way totaling above, right above nine thousand one hundred square feet is being requested to be abandoned. It is city-initiated for abandonment. There are utility and sewer easements being obtained, and there were no concerns through any departments for the, for the abandonment. Staff recommends approval for the right-of-way abandonment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Putney. Are there any questions of staff? There is no public hearing component to this item, and I believe that is discussion among ourselves. Is there any discussion on this item? As being none, is there a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to abandon the public right-of-way at the intersection of South Roan Street and East Highland Road.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aldridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson.
Yes.
Mayor Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton.
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Archer's Point replat and variance request. Again, Ms. Putney?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. This presentation will give you a rundown of kind of the timeline of the original requests and approvals, and then bring us kind of why we are here today. So the request in front of the commission is to replat lot seventy-three R on the proposed plan, which adds lot seventy-four, replaces that open space to a usable residential lot. In order to do so, there would be a variance request to the cul-de-sac to decrease the diameter from ninety-six feet, which is required, to what is existing at seventy-eight feet. The applicant has come forward to the Planning Commission in December of two thousand and twenty-four with the same request, which was denied. The creation of lot seventy-four would trigger that, that turnaround cul-de-sac to be brought up to compliance. In the subdivision regulations, a variance is due to unnecessary hardship or topographical issues that are pertinent to that lot. And if that is deemed adequate, the city engineer can work with the developer to provide means to remediate the, the issue and come up with a plausible solution. So that is what we are looking at today, is if there is a hardship that was not done by the applicant, or if there were any topographical or other conditions peculiar to the site. Walking back through the original subdivision plat, the stamped construction plans were approved January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. That shows the temporary turnaround with the correct radius of forty-eight feet. This would make that diameter of the entire temporary turnaround to ninety-six feet in diameter. The final plat that was approved by the Planning Commission in August of two thousand and twenty-four also indicated the correct temporary turnaround radius and diameter. But due during the as-built phase and the bond releasing inspections, city staff was made aware that the cul-de-sac was not built to the final plat standards and what was allowed and approved. And so the developer submitted a final plat amendment in December of two thousand and twenty-four. The final plat amendment is what is depicted in the red rectangle and requested a variance to section four dash two point four point one, which is the cul-de-sac requirements, to have a diameter of that seventy-eight feet rather than ninety-six feet. At the time of this request, the cul-de-sac was already built and in place. The Planning Commission denied the variance with reasoning that the hardship was self-inflicted as it was built incorrectly and in error. So without that variance request, lot seventy-four depicted in the red star either had to be removed or the cul-de-sac had to be brought up to standard. That was the two options. The final plat that was approved, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, eliminated lot seventy-four. So lot seventy-three was the, the main lot, and it kept the cul-de-sac as is with the seventy-eight-foot diameter. That was due to the temporary turnaround section of our subdivision ordinance states that a temporary turnaround shall not be required on a stub street that serves less than two lots. So with the approval, lot seventy-four was deemed to be served by the North Road, and only lot seventy-two and seventy-three were being served by that cul-de-sac. So it did not have to meet that requirement of a forty-eight-foot radius. With the addition of lot seventy-four, it would be brought up to that standard. In June of two thousand and twenty-five, the developer replatted seventy-three to create open space and provide some additional right-of-way and easements. This was done administratively since no new residential lots were being proposed, which brings us back to today in the request where lot seventy-four is being requested again with the same variance request as well. And that request for lot seventy-four requires that cul-de-sac turnaround to be brought up to that standard due to it serving more than two lots. This is an aerial that was provided in the, for the December request that shows that a house could be served. There we go. Could be served at the cul-de-sac. It also shows a good representation of the width and limitation of the cul-de-sac if cars are parked on the side of it. Again, the cul-de-sac was constructed in error, and Public Works and Engineering at the time of the original request provided memos that are in your staff reports that they are here to speak on as well. Those departments can answer any questions regarding their stance on those previous memos. Just to kind of zoom in at what we're looking at and what's being proposed, the cul-de-sac that's there would not be changing if the variance was to be approved. It would remain at seventy-eight feet in diameter, where figure seventeen of our cul-de-sac of the subdivision regulations requires that ninety-six-foot diameter, which allows for adequate turn radiuses for emergency vehicles, city vehicles, city utility vehicles, and so forth. Due to the variance being self-inflicted and the Planning Commission's previous denial of the variance, no further effort has been made to be brought up to compliance. Staff recommends denial of the variance request and subsequent final plat.
Thank you, Ms. Putney. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
I might have one. So on the seventy-eight in diameter, can a fire truck make that turn?
I will refer to the fire department here to answer any fire-related questions.
Good afternoon. David Bell, I'm fire chief for the city. No, ma'am, that really will not. Our ladder trucks cannot make that turn. As evident today, the interim fire marshal went out today and took some pictures. There's a dumpster there. There's debris that's piled up, different signs and so forth. It's basically made it impossible. He was in a pickup truck, and it was challenging to get into the cul-de-sac. So a fire truck would not be able to make that turn.
Is the dumpster remaining there, or?
I think it's there just for construction.
Okay, so even if it wasn't there, you still couldn't make the turn?
It's very, we would have to do multiple point turn to be able to get the truck turned around.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. We've got numerous cul-de-sacs that are like T-shaped.
Yes, sir.
You can't make a turn with those.
The way those are, they are required to be sixty feet from the midline of the road, sixty feet in each direction. That allows us to make the turn because our longest apparatus is forty-nine and a half feet. So, but by appendix D in the code, that's what it says. It has to be at least sixty feet. They could do that T-intersection, but it's going to take a majority of that lot on each side, each lot.
Your memos indicated that this variance was acceptable to you if approved.
Yes, the fire marshal, previous fire marshal actually did do that with signage and painting the curb.
Are you changing that opinion?
We, we are willing to do that, but there is still an issue with, I'll go along with what he had stated. I'm fine with that. It's still concerning for us to be able to make that turn, and the fact that no, no efforts have been made. They have put signs up. They did do that, but I'm concerned with the cars parked there. But it, since he did put that in place, I will back that, what he had placed in his memo.
What kind of signs did they put up?
The signage.
No parking signs?
Was it just?
Oh, no parking.
Sorry, I have the interim fire marshal with me right now.
I'm sorry, I missed a question. I was trying to find the signs.
Do they have them placed? He actually went out there today.
My name's Steve Alexander. I'll be serving as interim fire marshal for the city. So this came to my plate today. I went out there to put eyes on it. Sometimes, you know, you see a picture, you see aerial photographs. The reality is, when you drive it in a vehicle, you kind of get a better picture. So when I went out there, they do have some signage that says no parking, fire, fire zone, and, or fire lanes. So like you might see in a regular shopping center, it'll say no parking, fire lane in the front of a shopping center or whatnot. They have those signs around there, but they pile construction debris and all that. So it's very representative of what you might see if, once that is built out, you may see a lot of cars parked in that area. We see it all the time, people parking in fire lanes. Red paint on a curb doesn't seem to interrupt that.
Right.
So, and again, this is, this is one opportunity to meet the standard and make it safer for our responders to get around in an emergency situation. City trucks, brush trucks, trash trucks, not just emergency vehicles, but certainly we're concerned with the ladder trucks. They're very big, and they're not easy to turn around, so.
Do you normally see ladder truck use in residential subdivisions like this, we deal with at most a couple stories?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. On every residential fire or fire alarm, we will send at least three engines and one ladder truck. Okay, and the ladder truck has to be there in case we do have fire in the attic area to be able to reach it safely. So we'll use that ladder truck to do that.
How does this correspond with the engineering memo that said that they also approved this? If you guys, if it was okay with you, I saw a memo that said, if it was okay with you, it'd be, if we approved it, it would be fine. And then the engineer's memo said the same thing. So we have two okays, but not necessarily, they, you can read between the lines in that they would prefer it to be regulation size.
Yes, sir. We're trying to work with the developers to.
I'm sorry?
We're trying to work with the developers to try to help them through this process. We want to be the best servants we can be for them also, because they are bringing residential structures to our city. It is concerning, but we will bend if we need to. It can cause some problems, so.
Are you viewing this as kind of one of those things that, let's go ahead and do it and ask forgiveness rather than approval on the front end?
So due to all of the plans being approved that met standards and the cul-de-sac being built in error, it is an after-the-fact variance request rather than a request due to topographical issues.
How much is that factoring into this decision?
A staff's denial, it does not meet the requirements of a variance due to it being a self-inflicted hardship. If it were to be presented at the front hand, most likely, we, it would not have been granted since it does not meet the requirements for the variance.
Any other questions of, any other questions of staff at this time?
How often do errors like this happen, and how do you prevent them?
This was a contractor error, right?
Correct.
The contractor built it incorrectly.
Are these inspected by staff, or?
Yes, so it was during the final plat, as-built inspections and bond release inspections, it was noticed and recorded by staff, our Public Works Department, that the cul-de-sac was not built to what was approved on the construction plans and final plat. So that's when we were made aware and began remediating the process.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Thank you, Ms. Putney. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Seeing the developer here this evening, there is no public hearing component to this, this item. But seeing the developer here this evening, is there anything the developer would like to speak to? So we'll give you three minutes.
Brandon Stamper, one thirty-two, Walker's Bend Road. Just to add a little bit of context to where we're at, the original preliminary plat for this subdivision development was for a hundred and twenty-five lots. With this granted variance, it would only bring the total to a hundred and twenty lots. When this came before you guys in December, I was out of town and not able to provide the full context of the reason for the variance before we just made the changes to correct it. According to the approved construction plans, it is a temporary cul-de-sac that is approved, which means no curb, no binder, I'm sorry, binder only, no top coat. This was, as this noted, an error. It was an error in trying to massage some of the grading around to keep the cul-de-sac right-of-way out of those front-facing lots that you saw there. And in doing so, there was an error in using the old reg from two or three years ago of the seventy-four-foot cul-de-sac or seventy-eight, whichever it is, versus the current one. The reason to come before you guys and ask for that was to hopefully take a common sense approach that right now you have less lots than were approved on the preliminary plat. So there'll be five lots less even if this is approved. And right now you have a completed cul-de-sac with Miami curb all the way around it and top coat. If we go in and go back to the construction plans, that temporary cul-de-sac will be left without Miami curb and without top coat. So before we just arbitrarily tore that out to regain this lot to be platted, it felt worthy of a conversation with the Planning Commission that, hey, even though there might be some technicalities here, from a common sense standpoint, it seems like this would make sense. Back when this, back when this issue originally came up, it's already been stated you had an engineering approval that was going to be okay with it, and you had fire approval, which was going to be okay with it. There's a letter from the previous fire marshal stating they were out there. All he requested was the signs, which we immediately put up, thinking that there was no issue at that point in time. Again, this was going on right at the time that Mr. Ryder was relieved and not there. So we kind of got caught in some limbo of working through that with him and then his leaving the city. So that is kind of the reason for this dragging on the way, part of the reason for this dragging on the way that it has. So again, it just seems like if you look around within a half-mile radius, there are fourteen cul-de-sacs that are less diameter than what this cul-de-sac is. And on top of that, if you look at the top of the preliminary plat of this development, there are two stub streets that do not require subdivision. There is a twenty-foot difference in this street triggering the use of that lot not being able to be served off the main road, triggering the third lot for the cul-de-sac. So when all that coupled together, it just felt worthy of bringing it back before you guys and talking about it again before we took out a completed cul-de-sac with curb and top coat to replace it with a cul-de-sac without curb and without top coat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, vice up here, would you mind? Would you mind putting that aerial back up, please? You don't, you don't want me to touch it?
No.
Is that, is that possible?
That one.
That one?
That one.
Yeah. Now, could you just repeat what you just said with that aerial in mind?
With this aerial in mind, what I was saying is that particular cul-de-sac, as it is currently built, there are fourteen cul-de-sacs within a half-mile radius that are, that we have drawn that are less than that current cul-de-sac. If you were to be able, do you have the preliminary plat? That they could see. I think he was referring to the stub roads.
How old are those cul-de-sacs? I mean, are you talking about something that's fairly recent?
We just took an aerial of all the.
Yeah, but some of it could have been grandfathered in.
They could be very old.
Yeah, the top, the top street is what we're referring to. Both of those are fine without a cul-de-sac. The bottom portion there, it's our understanding if the, if this lot only touched this intersection, that this would be a non, a non-issue. So we are literally talking fifteen, twenty feet, and it being no difference than the top two approved jet-outs that not require cul-de-sacs and are just temporary stub-outs.
Any other questions of the developer?
I guess my, one of my questions would be, why not just give up lot seventy-four and make it right? I mean, it was basically an error on your contractor's part, right?
It was, it was an error. It was an error in the engineering.
It was an error right underneath our notes.
Yes, when we, when we provided the, when we provided the engineering, the contractors, the contractor built it to exactly what they are provided in trying to remove.
But, but it was your engineering, I mean.
That's correct. Yes, absolutely.
The people you hired.
And we have owned that from day one as we tried to, as we tried to work through this. To answer that question specifically, when this was done with the preliminary plat, it was a hundred and twenty-five lots. We're sitting at a hundred and nineteen. So that's a pretty significant reduction throughout the development to, to take.
But that's, I mean, and I appreciate that, but that's, that's not helping this situation.
No, under, understand, but it is also a buildable lot. And last time I checked, I believe we are still in a housing crisis with as many houses needing to be built as we possibly can. So it's a lot for an opportunity to have an additional house. That subdivision is pretty much sold out. So therefore, obviously, they are hitting a price point, the builders hitting a price point and providing housing for people. And, you know, it just seems, again, an opportunity for that.
Any other questions of, sorry, no, any other questions of the developer?
No for Ms. Putney.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Is there other cul-de-sacs that are in the city that don't have the curb and, and all that?
So I'll refer to the Public Works Department, and they can discuss the, the cul-de-sacs and old subregs and the, and the new regulations as well.
Okay. Even mini-money move.
So I'm Wallace McCullough, the city engineer. So, and I'm not as familiar with the older regs, but we, we did upgrade them because the cul, to satisfy the fire department in terms of allowing a bigger radius for them to make those turns. And also, like they mentioned, trash trucks and things like that. The older ones were a lot smaller, and, and they're probably pretty close to what those older ones were. It does make a difference. I understand what they're saying, that this is just one extra lot, but it's kind of, you're all. I understand what they're saying, that this is just one extra lot, but it's kind of your all's call on this thing.
But you're saying that the ordinance changed, right?
Yeah, the ordinance has been changed for two, three years, three, four years.
So the previous ones that he was referring to, they were built according to code?
The older ordinance, that's correct.
And then the code changed and...
That's correct.
I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, this subdivision, they mentioned a Miami curb. Is that an issue for your trucks, or are they allowed to go over that lower curb to make a turn if it was that tight?
Yeah, no, Miami curbs are used throughout most subdivisions, because it allows them to not worry about where the driveways are located.
Right, but your trucks are unaffected by that curb, or does it?
No, not at all.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much, Wallace. Megan, would you, I mean, it's been a little while since Riley's presentation. Would you perhaps just remind us, the subdivision regulations, I believe, are specific on the variance process, and there has to be, there's a test that we have to establish first, and the first, that that test is whether or not the hardship exists, and a variance can only occur if a hardship exists. But perhaps would you elaborate a little bit?
Correct. When we're looking at a subdivision's variance, it's different than what we see in our zoning. And so the subdivision regulations for the City of Johnson City lay it out. When strict adherence to the subdivision regulations would cause either an undue hardship or because of a topographical or other condition that's present within the lot, it would cause a situation that would restrict public interest, health, or safety. That would have to be, that would be a determination by the city engineer on that one portion. The general theory of zoning regulations, those are mostly local ordinances, they're locally governed. But the consistency across the state is that these types of undue hardships or these conditions cannot be self-imposed, and they cannot be for financial gain. Those are the main points of order that the Planning Commission would need to consider in determining whether or not to grant this request. When we're talking about other similarly situated neighborhoods, when a subdivision is built, it is built to the specifications that are in place at the time. So while there may be other situations that would mirror the situation we are here, we can't look to those unless they were built at the same time, under the same regulations, and we have the reasoning for it. The final thing that I have is, any variance that is granted under the subdivision regulations, it cannot nullify the general intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations. And if it is approved, the Planning Commission has to state their reasonings in the minutes. If, I said there's one last thing, but then it just reminded me of another. If the developer or any individual petitioning before the Planning Commission is not happy with the Planning Commission's decision, there is an appeal process to take it to the Chancery Court through a writ of certiorari. And I believe that's all I have.
I'm reading from some written regulations, or is this policy that is available to a developer? What you just said?
Yes, the majority of this is found within Section 1.6 of the Johnson City subdivision regulations. The portions talking about the self-imposed or financial gain, that is the interpretation of generally accepted practices throughout the state.
That's an interpretation, but it's not part of that.
No, but it's guidance.
I've never seen anything in there that would preclude someone making a variance because they wanted to avoid or wanted to have some financial gain. Quite frankly, the financial gain aspect of it is probably what drives a lot of the variances. And I would find that that interpretation seems to me to be probably not something that should be applicable to your policy for denial.
And when we're talking about a variance within a zoning code, I would agree. But when we have this here in the subdivision regulations, when we're talking about interpretation, it is how courts have viewed various appeals or questions that have come to them through the writ of certiorari process, and it has been decently founded, I can't say well-founded because I haven't done extensive research on it, that those two areas for undue hardship that's self-inflicted, or one for financial gain, the courts are generally saying, no, that is not going to be a practice that we're going to allow, and that is something that even you can find within MTAS as well. So it is not written in our code, but it is how it's interpreted if it is taken up. And so we do, just in reading law, we do take those interpretations as well.
I believe state code as well refers to that criteria, as certainly as it pertains to zoning, it does anyway.
I'm sorry.
So I believe state code actually certainly, but applies that same rationale that you have, as I think, I mean, as it pertains to zoning particularly, but that hardship and then hardship, the hardship test before you get to a variance theory is pretty well alliterated.
Correct.
Any other questions of staff? So, please, if you want to add something, come ahead, come back.
I was just going to say that, keep in mind, we're doing about 800 homes currently in your city.
I'm sorry, I can't.
I said, we're doing almost 800 homes in your all-city right now. We've never, we've never asked for a variance. So the hardship, there is a hardship here. We made a mistake, but it wasn't for our gain, because we could have left that as a temporary, spent $25,000 less if we had some dark intent. So I think if you look at something else you got to think about, too, is that, and I'm going to go ahead and tell it, Ben. So when they called me a year ago, or two years ago, and said, "That badass curb out there, would the city ask us to donate property?" I believe in that big time, because it's a horrible curb. They called back recently, needed two more acres. When it comes to a pure thing of safety, I don't think I'm being even a good person to do what's right. That's just, you should do it. So when I look at this, Ben, serving, what, two homes? And I look at it, we're off 20 feet, and it's almost like we're so heavenly bound, we're no earthly good when we look at it that way. Because I believe in road safety. I've got grandchildren, so anytime somebody gives me an opportunity, I am. But this is just, it seems to be so slight, and the hardship is, we made a mistake. Underneath our own nose, wasn't trying to. But we're, the last set of regulations from three years ago, this would have been okay. It would have worked. We're wrong. We're dead wrong, but it doesn't serve 55 lots. It's only serving two. It's so minimal. I understand the rules. I mean, we knowingly, unknowingly did this. I'm just imploring upon you all to think about, you know, I'm not saying, I would never do it again. And I'm not trying to say, well, we did something intentionally, but it was just, sometimes we get in a little bit of hurry. But when I look at how bad of a foul it is, sometimes it's about how bad the foul is, or if it's intentional. You wouldn't do this intentionally and build it and not get anything out of it. It'd be crazy. So the other thing is, when I think about that S-curb out there, it's horrible. I've always been willing to work with the city and go back and see, that two acres was in the, we was able to get D.R. Horton to agree with us to give more before they'd run out of the clock to be able to do it, because when it comes to that, I've been on record before of doing some things around roads, because I believe in it. Sometimes you don't have to tell me to do it, because I sort of, and we've never asked for one variance, and we're doing 800 doors with you all in your all-city. We've already got 350.
Mr. Castor was remiss a little earlier. Would you mind stating your name and address, please, for the record?
I have a hard time, I dress dyslexic a little bit. It's 1, oh, Danny Cars, it's 125 West Center Street, Kingsport 3766 zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you all just consider that.
Well, Commissioners, I believe the discussion is among ourselves.
This is probably, can you hear me? This is probably a, one I've been wrestling with. I wrestled with it in December, and I'm wrestling with it now. What I have found, sometimes when we're doing subdivisions or doing some of these plats, that if the planning department doesn't want something done or a variance, they can pull out a lot of regulations to cause that to be denied or to recommend a denial on it, even if it's sometimes very, very small. And I'm just concerned that that's the case here. I'm also concerned about, we had talked about last time on the fire and emergency vehicles, about if there was a need to address this, you've got a street to pull into that wouldn't even require you pulling into the cul-de-sac, up to the cul-de-sac to reach those homes. I don't believe that you would be straight in front of those homes and just run a, and that probably wouldn't be the case with the ladder truck. But I'm just frustrated with trying to inch this along with regulations that are so tight that we can't give some room here under these circumstances to afford a little bit of a flexibility here. And one other question, I just wonder if, and this thing's already built out, isn't it? I mean, you've got light poles, you've got the infrastructure in, you've got the whole thing done, is it not? So if you're talking about the variance not being granted, you're ripping out what's already in there, including all the electrical infrastructure and lighting, everything else, and having to come in and redo it. Is that correct?
So the developer has options if the variance is not granted. If the variance is not granted, the cul-de-sac can remain with Lot 73 in the open space. They don't have to tear it up. They can bring it up to compliance if they want that additional Lot 74.
Okay, thank you.
This is one I've struggled with also, Steve, and I empathize with the developer. I don't think that it was their intent to do this by any means. I don't like the precedent that it would state that if we did grant the variance, it clearly does not hurdle either one of the, you know, the financial gain in that it's self-inflicted. But I don't want our city to be, have the reputation of being so stringent that we're hard to work with, which is the rub for me, trying to balance those two. That's... That's my struggle.
I think I share that sentiment. I think ultimately where I fall, where I fall on this one personally is that the, I think the, in this case, our subdivision regulations are pretty clear, the process is pretty clear. It doesn't meet the test for, it doesn't meet the test for a hardship, and therefore, the variance doesn't come into it. I would note that we have heard concerns expressed from the fire department this evening, having been out there actually in person about the functionality of the turnaround. And I would note that, I mean, it was designed originally, it was, albeit on the preliminary plat, it was the smaller dimension as-built, but on the final plat, it was the full dimension. The final plat did comply with the subdivision regulations. It could be built, it could be built to city standards. So ultimately, that's where I struggle, that's where I think I come down on it. I don't like the, I can't overcome myself, I can't overcome the precedent we would be setting by going against the, you know, finding something, granting a variance where there can be no hardship.
I agree with Commissioner Dutton. I think there are many sides to weigh here, to errors, to human. This is an unfortunate mistake, but at the end of the day, I feel like we would be potentially putting public safety on a lower rung over, you know, people's desire to, you know, not to update any further work on this subdivision. So, yeah, that's basically it. Thank you to our city fire and also our Public Works for their time.
Is there any other discussion?
Is it, the way it's currently built, is it currently a Miami curb, or is it?
It's Miami curb.
Like you all, I'm struggling with this as well. I think the thing that makes me lean more toward approving it is the fact that the fire marshal and the engineers, city engineers, have indicated that they would go along with it, that they would, that it would be okay. I mean, I'm on the fence, honestly, I'm on the fence, because I like to see things done the right way and according to what the code and the ordinances are. But I think this is an honest mistake. And, you know, as long as the fire marshal and the city engineers feel like it would be safe. You know, the thing that does concern me is, people aren't going to park, they're going to park on the road. That cul-de-sac's going to be full of cars, there's no doubt in my mind. And so I guess, are we allowed to ask another question to the fire marshal?
Sure.
Sorry, guys, but if you guys could, the thing that I want to know is what Commissioner Goodson brought up, because I'm not sure that that's correct, in that the fire truck can reach those two lots without going into the cul-de-sac?
So with those lots, our furthest reach is 100 feet from the ladder truck. That is from the truck and the road. Most likely, that is going to be further than what we can reach with a ladder truck. In that situation, we would be hard-pressed not to back all the way in there just to get to a reach. The distance being over 150 feet for the whole road, it is longer than the other two dead ends that they discussed. That's a problem. We go over a 150-foot mark in the appendix D, it clearly states that it has to have that turnaround. And that's where we're at with that one. We would not be able to reach it from that point, and that could in turn put our personnel at risk. I don't want to do that, but like I said, I want to be aware of the developer's needs, and we want to help them, but at what cost?
So, another question is then, if you have to have the 100 feet...
Yes, ma'am.
Could you not go ahead and pull straight in to that cul-de-sac? And I know, I know we're not talking about turning around, but if there's a fire, could you do that safely to be able to put out any fire and that sort of thing on those two lots?
It's, it's hard to say on that, depending on the situation. Like you said, with cars parked there, we might have a challenge of being able to reach it. It would be situation-dependent. It's hard to really come up with a solid answer on that. We would do our best to figure out a way to make it work, and we always have, and we're going to continue to do that. But being able to actually drive in there to get to the point where we could put the ladder up is our goal. The issue we'll run into, most likely, our engine company will be there first, the ladder company will be coming in secondary, so we would have to work around that as well. Having two apparatus in that small area would be a challenge. And with the ladder trucks, we have to have at least 18 feet wide to be able to set them up for our outriggers to be able to reach. So that puts another bit of a challenge into, if we have an engine there, we wouldn't have enough room to set the ladder truck up there. We'd have to move an apparatus out of the way to pull the ladder truck in.
How wide is that road?
It should be 26 feet.
26, and you have to have 18?
18 of that is for the ladder truck, just to be able to get the full extension of the outriggers to be able to set it up safely. Yes, yeah, we're talking about...
We're talking about the road. Thank you.
You're requiring signs and the curb painted red?
Yes, sir.
They said the signs were up, but I don't see any curbs painted red in this picture.
Not currently, no.
They're not painted, right now.
Correct.
If you are in our seats, how would you vote?
Me personally, I would be against the variance, just to be straight up and honest. From my concern, if it was my house there, I would be concerned with that. And there is room on the side to add to the cul-de-sac, I believe. I'm not an engineer, and I don't want to try to make that decision, but it was a mistake, yes, but there is room to do that and still get, I think, a valuable lot out of it.
And would you vote the same way?
Again, I'm new to this role, and I appreciate the concern, and I appreciate the tough questions, I really do, and this is very informative for me, but just on what I saw today, and then coming from 22 years in suppression and having operated ladder trucks, fire trucks, as a driver, a firefighter, a lieutenant, and most recently, a command officer, we have so many variables... have so many variables that we deal with already. To set a precedent by not meeting the original standard gives us another variable to deal with, should we have that emergency. So I would personally vote not to do the variance.
Just one other quick question. You had indicated if this is not approved, they would not have to change the cul-de-sac.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
That's what was said.
Who's 74?
How does that benefit your situation?
There's less structures to protect there. If you don't have Lot 74, the access is still there, there's nothing to protect beyond that.
Okay, so it's eliminating that need to stretch that to get down there. That's the only difference, correct?
Yes, sir, I think it's two lots.
Yeah, there's two lots right there. If you go past two lots, that's where we'll throw in the requirement.
Okay.
Anything over 150 feet, like I was saying on that, it has to have that, and that's from beginning to end of that road.
Thank you, Chief Fire Marshal. Back to us, any further questions?
I was just gonna ask the developer, how much, how much are we talking about to have to add the 20 feet?
Add the 20 feet?
With, putting it back the way that it is.
Would you care to step up to the podium, please?
We won't hold you to it. I just want an idea of ballpark, how much money are we talking about to have to add the 20 feet? Can you bring it to code?
The issue, if you go back to the, if you go back to where they have the plat, it's creating issues with the lots themselves to give the public right of way through those lots for the end-user mind. That was what really triggered trying to, I guess, trying to massage that in the first place. There are, as it was mentioned, it's the utilities that are already in that cause the biggest problem. Basically, all of that would have to be rerouted. We actually spent more money on the cul-de-sac curving it and top coating it than we would have just to do the temporary cul-de-sac with binder only, so that it wasn't a financial issue there. You're probably looking at $55,000 would be my ballpark by the time you rerouted all the material, or rerouted all the utilities that are already in.
And how much are the lots going for?
I believe 72, that's what they're under contract for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Back to us, any further discussion?
Just forward, there's also a drainage movement that we would have to deal with.
Excuse me, please. If you're gonna speak, please step up to the podium there.
There's also, there's also a drainage easement behind that that is also causing effects of all that water that's coming down.
But that's a little confusing if, again, the final design accounted for a wider cul-de-sac.
The wider cul-de-sac, again, was into those other lots.
But again, but I would assume so, the infrastructure was not installed per plan either. It was, it's not just the cul-de-sac that was not installed per plan, it was the infrastructure as well?
No, the, I don't recall an issue with anything with engineering or anything on the utilities themselves.
Well, my understanding is that the final plat, the design of the final plat was the, was in accordance with the subdivision regulations at the full width. So I'm a little confused if we're saying that building it further-
I believe there was an issue, there was an issue with the engineer on doing it. They had not completed their ASB yet, and that should not have been turned in.
Okay, I don't think that helps, I'm still puzzled there. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to put the engineers, the city engineers, on the hot seat for a minute. I'm just curious, from you all, I know that you had indicated previously that if the fire marshal was in agreement with this, you guys would be okay with it. Is that still your stance, especially hearing the marshal say he would not be for this?
So we changed the regulations to suit what they have in terms of widths and turnarides and things like that. And so, yeah, when they, when we got the letter from them approving it, it's only one extra lot. It wasn't, if they felt like they could reach it with their fire engines, then we were kind of okay with it. I'd rather it not be this way, but this is kind of the way it is right now, so.
I understand. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to pitch on the spot.
Thanks, Hawes. Let's try that again, any further conversation, or would anyone like to try for a motion?
I mean, it's just a really tough decision, because I feel for the developer, like I said, I really honestly feel like it was an honest mistake. But I think we have to listen to our staff, and we have to listen to the fire marshal, the engineers, and if it's not gonna be the safest method to take care of those two lots, I guess, you know, I would probably have to say that I could have to approve the denial.
So we, I don't want y'all to have to vote on it.
Excuse me, excuse me, Danny, Danny, this is not-
So I would just want you not to have to vote on it. It's too hard on everybody, and I'll just lose mine. I don't want you to-
Danny, this is not-
I would withdraw it, Ken. I'm withdrawing. See, I'm withdrawing it, so you don't have to take the vote, because it's too hard on everybody. I don't need it that bad. We'll just figure it out later. Sir?
We can take it.
Megan, is that, is that, is that an option? Sorry to push you on there. I'm procedurally out of my depth here, I apologize.
So, yes, an applicant can withdraw their motion up until the vote of the commissioners. My understanding, we had not actually had a motion before.
We had not.
So it is an appropriate time, if that's what the applicant wants to do.
So just, Danny, you wish to withdraw?
Well, before you do, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
I think we just had a, this is getting confusing here. I think we just had a request to, we just had a request to withdraw it. There was a motion that was, we seemed to be heading towards a motion to deny it. I think we'll accept the, Danny clearly articulated a desire to withdraw it, we will accept that pending contradiction from council, we'll accept that request to withdraw at this point.
In seemingly simultaneous motions, the timing really is the key. And so if that was done before, there was information about what the motion would be, that would be what we entertain.
All right, let's consider that motion, let's consider this item withdrawn. Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on-
I apologize. Next item on the agenda, the Thompson Field subdivision preliminary plat. Again, Ms. Pudney.
Yes. Commission, this will look similar to a request that you saw earlier this year. It is a preliminary plat for Thompson Field subdivision. The property lies within the county, but in the city planning region, so it is, does have to meet our subdivision requirements. The lot, or the subdivision, is depicted in red off of Boons Creek Road and Thompson Road. It is an approval for a preliminary plat, excuse me, for an 18-lot subdivision in Washington County. The county, in the county, it is zoned A1 with the requirements of a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. City sewer is available, city water is, would need to be extended 160 feet. Widening to Thompson Road would be required, and this would be in conjunction with the county and the developer. And due to it being in the county, there would be no interior sidewalks required for the subdivision regulations. Some aerials and views of the road, Thompson Road, due to the skinniness of the road, would need to be widened, again, in conjunction with Washington County and the developer. The property is vacant with gentle sloping areas, and the interior road will be built to local street standards, just without interior sidewalks. And the reason this is coming back, there was a change of layout with lots and stormwater, and the layout of the interior road, so that is why it's being brought back to, as a preliminary plat, to planning commission. Staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat due to it meeting the requirements of the subdivision regulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pudney. Other questions of staff?
Cul-de-sac the right size?
Yes.
Not punchy questions of staff, okay, just to clarify. Are there any other questions of staff? Okay, no public hearing on this item, discussion among ourselves.
I think this is the right type of development for the Boons Creek area. I think it's in line with existing homes in that area. I'm a bit concerned that it won't be in city limits. I wish that it was, I'd be a little bit more apt to support it if it were, but like I said, this is an appropriate type of development for the Boons Creek area. I actually have a question for Ms. Hodges, if it's too late for that, that's okay.
Go ahead, please.
Ms. Hodges, just really quick, it just mentioned in the report about the Miami curb, which is ironic, because it's related to our other items on the agenda. Is that something that you see as part of like a multimodal goals around the Horizon 2045 plan, where if a neighborhood has a Miami sidewalk versus a more vertical, traditional curb, rather, that that's something that is not as amenable to multimodal public transportation?
One of the things that we did about four years ago was to look at context-sensitive streets, and our subdivision ordinance reflects context-sensitive streets, so in the context of it being in the county, a roll curb, which is what I call the Miami curb, because you can roll over it, is appropriate. So we rely on the context of where you're putting these types of facilities.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat for the Thompson Field subdivision.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aldridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Baumgartner.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson.
Yes.
Mayor Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dutton.
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Thank you, Ms. Pudney.
Thank you.
Ms. Hodges, the planning manager report.
Winnie Hodges, planning manager. I didn't say that earlier. But the one thing that I have to report is that October, according to the APA, is National Community Planning Month. And so this year in particular, we would like to have a proclamation and invite y'all for that proclamation on October 2nd, so if you'll put that in your calendars. The work that you did on the Horizon 2045 plan is really remarkable, and we want to make sure that everybody kind of knows that, too. Might be the mayor's first time hearing that.
Thank you.
Don't make it one of those, it's like-
And that's all I really have to report.
Okay, thank you very much. As far as the planning chair report is concerned this evening, I think the only item really to share with the group is the bylaws. There's a draft of an amendment to the bylaws that is currently being reviewed by the city attorney. Those changes are not particularly, are not particularly epiphanal, really bringing into, really just reflecting in the bylaws what is our current practice as it pertains to committees and standing, we're deleting the standing committees that the bylaws currently establishes and requires to meet in favor of an executive committee meeting to help guide the planning commission strategically. But once we have those, once the city attorney has reviewed, and blessed those, and those will be circulated among us, and then bought before the commission for a formal approval. With that, is there any other business we need before us this evening? I don't think so, I believe we're complete. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at a little 7:03.